School Board to order the time is six o'clock. Please rise for the pitch. I should probably just. Welcome everyone and thank you guys for joining us. First, we're gonna go ahead and recognize the kids at Torres Middle School who won. One of the twenty twenty five Spirit of Education Awards in America Library of Poetry Student Poetry Contest. Gina, do you wanna come up and say their names or do you want me to say my name?
Could you tell us a little bit more about the six contests too and what they did?
So every year. Since I learned about the poetry contest, I've had students create poems. We do a whole unit on it and then. I don't make an option like they have to put their poems in and a lot of times they keep saying, I don't like it. I don't wanna do it. I'm like, you're gonna be fine. You're gonna be great. And every year that we've been doing it, we have a lot of kids that get their poems recognized and published into this. National poetry book and so they become published poets. And so this year is a little bit different because not only did I or I shouldn't say I. Not only did we have a lot of students whose poems were chosen to be published, they also won. Help me, classroom computer package? Yeah, so that'll be coming soon and so we won that for the classroom. And then we'll be getting an award for all of us and they gave some type of one for like the most. Submissions per se, so they recognizing me in my class. But can they all just come out?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, well, hold on. They'll read your names off. That way we have like.
Hayden Worley. Gabriel Vino. Caitlin Mills. Corinne Moll. Kayla Trillo. Dawson Lower. Casey Estrada. Caleb Geronimo. Lily Hart. Levi Wiley. It must have not all gone through, so we have. I miss it all up. Don't be not a bee. Laila Carpal. I'm so sorry. I missed it all up. Don't be not a bee. Laila Carpal. I'm so sorry. I missed it all up. Don't be not a bee. Laila Carpal. Emma Chasen. Emma Starks. Yes. Is that it guys? Okay, alright.
Do we get the board in there with them?
Hey, let's go down a little bit. I can't see her. Ready guys? Thank you guys for recognizing us.
Most people wait a lifetime to get over. There you go. Ms. Eldred. You two stay out of trouble. I'll try not to.
Well, that. I've got this. It's like this. I know. I know. I know. I know. It's like this.
You two stay out of trouble.
Well, that. I feel that. That's what I'm saying.
I've had two students this year entered the Hispanic Heritage Month Contest. And there was a statewide contest and so would like to recognize Waking Paola. I think is how her surname is. What is it? Okay, so I added another syllable on there. So she entered, so she is a participation. But we also had in the great state of New Mexico, third place, Pearl Rosa Fernandez. Now, out of all the high schools in New Mexico, she got third place. Good job.
Yeah, do we have any comments tonight? It looks like you're here for.
I always have something to say, but I didn't come prepared today.
It looks like you're here for.
I always have something to say, but I didn't come prepared today.
You know, I'm gonna start with me tonight, okay guys? You don't mind? Last night we went to. Sister David wasn't with us last night, but anyway, went to the fall school board training. And. It wasn't good. They had an apple copper with ice cream that homemade. Anyway, I say with Ms. Eldred's here, I wanted her to hear this too because it's part of my plan there. So we're hosting in the spring. It should be somewhere around the fourteenth to the twentieth, somewhere April, I mean. What did I say? The spring. Yeah, spring. So and that's like nine schools, something like this.
At Honda, Las Cruces, Rita, so in T R C.
Because they're all.
Board members, superintendent will come here.
And we've done several of these and they're good. They do a nice, a really nice job. Actually, most of them. The food is outstanding. Last night we watched Spanish dancers. Captain, one time they had to have a really good band wire, so they had a band wire concert. So go ahead. We did a club buffing, you know. Anyway, so we wanna do, we wanna outdo them big time. We really wanna show off to those schools. So our thought process right now is we're gonna do like a twenty or twenty-five minute video. Like a highlight.
Yeah, like a highlight film, like all the sports.
Boards, teachers teaching, school board in their meetings, buses pulling in, we're playing the music. We have motocross racers in town, get some of them on the video. We have some team ropers, that kind of stuff. Anything that shows off to the rose of our kids. And Frankie's very creative and we thought with all your pictures in the year, but you could help us put a really cool video together. And I think we can, I think we can raise the bar on what we've been seeing. So we're gonna try to put two or three people together. We had a gentleman come to our school board meeting three months ago or so. That does all the PR for Mescolero. And we're gonna try to meet him on board.
Well, yeah, we even thought about like even having Signora Sanchez's, people still dressed up in their. Honestly, they have don't to dance, but showing that.
Even if they're just walking in the gym, the dancers could be over there dancing and we can get the Apache drum player. We wanna have like deep in its fried bread with Mexican food.
That's what we're great.
Bunch of cultures involved in that, so we wanna do something. A little over the top. So Tom told me we have all the money with.
Did you get that right?
Anyway, I did ask Tom for budget, so we're gonna see what we can do for a budget to do something like this and. Being at the high school, Jody will be really highly involved helping us. I think that's our prettiest campus right now, plus we'll have the middle school. Being built at the same time, so we can put up pictures of our new, of all the designs in the middle school and. Just show off to the rose.
Have a question. Are you gonna get local business involved too?
No, most of the other places don't because it's only like a two hour meeting and they eat and then they just show off the school and then it's a training for the school board members. But we get a little spot there that we can, we can show off the school, but we do have some other things that. At the high school and the middle school that they get local businesses involved, the job bears and that kind of stuff.
Or like Fall Festival.
It's coming up. We could use your help. Middle school, we got finally today. We got the RFP done. We have advertisements to the papers that have to be there and so. The twelve on Sunday, it actually. It hits all the papers and all the construction journals, so then we have like a month or so there. Where they look and we have pre-construction meetings coming up, so after Monday, the middle school is full swing, so. We should be really. Hopefully we're gonna break ground. I'm guessing January now. But, no?
No, because you go out to P S E O C in January.
Yeah, but that's just for the waiver. They can still break ground if they.
I don't know.
January nineteenth, we have to go to council and ask them for a waiver because just for information purposes, the project's forty-nine million dollars. We have to pay twenty-six percent of that and we can't bomb that out, so we have to go back to council, which is normal thing to go and ask for a. Bigger percentage of our money, which should not be any issue since we've done all the steps and we've done everything through the P S A and the P S U C, so. Then after that, it will really blow up and you'll see a lot of construction, which shouldn't affect any other schools because it's in the old baseball field and it's already fenced off and it should be. We won't have to move people around, bend around. They'll have their own entrances and be behind the school. And football parking next year may be something we have to look at, but that's it. What else do I have? I think that is it for me. Is there any questions from anybody has any questions about? Alright, let's start with pre-K today. Miss Ball.
Good evening. Things are going well in pre-K. We had our first meet and greet visit from our New Mexico pre-K specialist. She was very pleased to meet the staff and walk into the classroom and see the things going on. She was very happy that we are a full inclusion model. One of the few in New Mexico for the preschools and that's what they're wanting preschools to do. So she was really happy to see that we're using that model. She'll be back in November to do more formal observations of each of the classrooms and instruction going on. Through the grad, New Mexico pre-K teachers receive coaching to help support them in their classrooms. So Ms. Medina and Ms. Hellasetti. Got their first cycle of observations yesterday, today, and that's gonna help guide them in the coaching. We have the new three white class teacher who just started, Pauline Sebuda, so that's going great, which means that now Marlon Burton is officially our special ed preschool teacher. So he is providing support for all three classrooms. The specialist, our specialist was really happy, like I said, to see that. Parent-teacher conferences are scheduled. Student night is going on right now and there's a lot of families there and we're getting ready for Fall Festival. The family engagements, activities that we have planned in preschool are going on within the classrooms, but we just have the first part of a literacy series we wanna do where. We brought, we partnered with Ms. Norris and she called it riding time and the theme was the house system and so she introduced the house system. At the preschool level, just what are the things they are doing in the classrooms and preschool related to that? And she also talked, helped families, so the teachers and Ms. Norris gave tips on how to do bring phonemic awareness. And how to work on that with their little ones in the home, so that'll be a first part of literacy. She wants to do four more to touch on different parts of literacy. So that we have that parent education piece for our preschool parents. So things are good.
Thank you.
Ms. Grace and Mr. O'Brien is at Ron Park right now, they threw out today, so hopefully their plane wasn't delayed. It was dark, but special ed.
Oh, hey, I don't really have lots. Today's forty day reporting, so we've been working really hard to ensure all of our data and stuff is submitted accurately to the state. Also working with. All the schools just to make sure students are getting their support. We are happy to have kind of Marlon on board as, you know, he can focus on preschool now. But yeah, things are going good. We're busy.
We're fully staffed now, filing up.
No, so we do have a social work position open currently. So that position's still open.
Thank you.
Mr. Eldred. Evening, everybody. Madam President, members of the boards, we're kind of busy, just a quick update for us, you know, there at the middle school. Great news that we're getting that middle school is rolling, so I'm pretty excited, excited to hear about that, so. Academically, we just established a teacher mentor, a teacher mentor program. Of course, there's one within the district that we need, that we would like to have for our newer teachers. And of course, the state requires it for teachers first through their third year also, so I kinda just piggybacked off that. I went off of the evaluations of the. Of the teachers and I identified four teachers that are gonna actually go and support the new teachers or teachers that need, you know, additional support, not necessarily observe. But really coach and help them, help them out. So not only are they gonna go inside their classrooms, where we're gonna allow the teachers to go into their classrooms, find coverage for them. Go into the classrooms and really learn about, and it's gonna be different. Content, but it, you know, the classroom management, the procedures, the routines, so we're establishing that and we've already had a few teachers. Actually take part in that. As a matter of fact, today, we do, and I think I failed to mention last time, we do have a restorative room now. So that restorative room is used for a cooldown period, because I tell the kids too, like, hey, sometimes I need that ten fifteen minute like. To take a breath, right? And I could, I could understand that some students would, would feel overwhelmed, so we got that opportunity for them to have a restorative room now. Granted, everything comes with trial and error, right? There are some kids that were going in there staying a little bit too long, but we established that routine where, hey, like. We need to, we need to make sure that, hey, you get the support that you need, you feel better and that's, that's get you back into class, right? With that being said, we do have smart pass now, so we implemented smart pass and of course, again, it's, we're learning the system and we just have to continue. Doing things with fidelity, right? So we have smart pass and what it is, is it's, it's, it's. We're only allowing like certain amount of students out of the class at a time, right? So now instead of having nine, ten kids, oh, he's at the bathroom, he's at the nurse, she's at the front office, or she's at the restorative room, he's at the restorative room, right? So now it's a little bit more, it's, it's a lot more controlled, right? And of course, we still have to, again, implement it with fidelity and make sure that we're, we're implementing. So it's only like, like, for example, in the bathroom, we only have three to four at a time, instead of having, you know. Issues and within the bathroom. It's kind of cool too, because if you're having some conflict or some friend groups that do some extracurricular. Things inside the classroom, I mean, sorry, outside of class, we could block them from going into the, to the bathroom, you know, together or to a certain area together. So we're implementing that. Vercata guest, so that's our due when they come and check in. So we had, we had. Paper right before and it was a little bit difficult because I, I just felt like, oh, what if we lose a sheet of paper? But now with Vercata, they come into the, to the class and to this floor and I think you went in there and checked it out, so it's real simple. The teacher, I mean, the students say they show up late, they do late arrival, click on that and then they type in their, their stuff, right? It takes a picture and it prints out their pass already and it says late and we just write on there if it's excused or unexcused and then they end up going back to and going back to their class, even visitors. So it's kind of cool too with visitors that come in, right, that are, that are gonna interact with our kids and everything. They actually do a quick security screening. And sometimes it flags. And sometimes it flags them and it may not be the, the person, right, but and it, it allows us to, just try to optimize the best that we can, our, our. Our, uh, security process there, so it, it actually, it actually helps out, uh, you know, quite a bit and, and. And that, so extracurricular and stuff, while, you know, Ms. Armio already said it with our, our students, right, that they stepped it up, it was last year. You know, and, and I'm glad that they, they, they were recognized for, for their, their things, but to celebrate, you know, volleyball. In general, uh, they had a very successful year, uh, Ms. Armio did an amazing job with high expectations, not only. On the court, but also in the classroom, you know, I really, I give her credit, I'm gonna give her credit here too. Um, she, she really emphasized the importance of academics, that she established her own, uh, like academic policy, like, hey, if you have an F, you can't play. And you know what, I'll be honest, the first game. We had about, we had a couple girls sit out cuz they didn't have the refs, the next, the next game, we didn't have. Anybody, you know, I'm like, man, that, that kinda, that kinda, you know, worked out, so just being, again, just being consistent and, and staying on top, so I had to really give her. Give her credit where, where it's due there, uh, our football team. Football team undefeated, you know, undefeated season, you know, getting that, getting that momentum, right, getting that momentum when they head to, head to high school, I see a lot of, you know, a lot of positive. Uh, deals there too and cheer, you know, cheer is, is in full force too, we have quite a few girls out, we actually got a new girl that came out and. You know, she, she's, uh, she's enjoying it too, we have champion walks, one of these days you guys are more than welcome to, to come in, you know, and, and. Check it out, we have champion walk, so the first game and the last game, we, uh, we empty, empty the classroom, they, they, uh, they walk in the. In the, uh, the hallway, all the kids are there and they're playing music and we're just cheering them on on the way out to, to go to their, to go to their game, so that's a, it's pretty. It's pretty amazing to, to, uh, to experience that too. Um, parent communication, I, I try to stay, try to keep the parents as, as informed as I can, you know? Um, with, with weekly parent teacher, while parent, you know, communication and weekly updates, if it's not by myself, I know. I, I, we have a, a monthly newspaper that comes out too, that's by the students. Parent teacher conferences, there's this year, we did it through advisory, so my goal was, and I told the teachers. One hundred percent of students and their parents need to be contacted. And I said, if you do it through advisory, it doesn't need to be like a full blown, okay, I just wanna let you know, uh, your, your, your student is doing well, you know, you may wanna, uh. Here's, here's a, just a, a list of their grades and, um, if you wanna meet with a teacher specifically or an individual, like. Just let me know and we could establish that, that, you know, let that teacher know to reach out to, to that parent, right? Still honoring though, the, the traditional parent teacher conferences, so we're still allowing, we still want parents to come in and, and, you know, walk around our school and. Be with the teachers, but I just really wanted our, our teachers to, um, and our parents, right, to feel supported that, hey, we need to. Reach out to them, so there's that clear, clear communication, um. Other than that, we've been, uh, we've been doing, we've been doing well, of course, there's some learning curves, right, when it comes with the first year, with the first, uh. Quarter, but I think we're gonna continue to, to go in the, in the right direction, so you guys have any questions for me? At all?
Alright. Good turnaround.
Yeah. You know what? Thank you, big thanks to the staff, you know, like, I think Ms. Armio took off, but you know, it's to the staff, they're, they're. You know, they, I feel very supported with, with the staff, you know, and they let me know like, hey, and you know, Mr. Miss, uh. Uh, Ms. Mendez could tell me, Mister Alvarez, man, this sucked, I think we need to improve in it, and I feel like we have that, we have that communication and the relationship where she could feel like, hey, like. Let's improve here, you know, and, and that's what we're trying to, we're trying to, it's not perfect yet, you know, and it may not, not never be, but we'll strive for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, I thought you were hiding over there. Go ahead, right in.
Um, so as far as C T E goes, F A will be headed to nationals at the end of this month. Um, HOSA, which is our nursing pathway. Um, when I refer to HOSA, that's their CTSO, um, they're gonna be competing on November fifteenth in Cruces for their regionals, they have eighteen students going to compete. Last year, we took a suburban with, I think, five students, so eighteen students is like fantastic. Educator rising is Ms. Portillo CTSO and she has fifteen students. Um. This is her class right here, they come to our board meetings. Uh, Mister Bean is doing the New Mexico Barbecue Association and our hopes were to have at least enough to do one team and he has enough for two teams. And then, um, Mister Montes does the welding competition and they're gonna have their first welding competition here in Tularosa next month. Um, Mrs. Portillo, Mrs. Blondell will be taking six of their student leaders for their CTSO programs to the CTSO Fall Rally in Las Cruces on October fifteenth. Um, and then by December eighteenth, a hundred percent of our students will have an industry certification at the high school for C T E. Um, that's, that's something that we are very proud of right now, is that a hundred percent of our students are on a C T E pathway. Um, we had, um, Senator Paul. Three hundred Paul, I wanna say Senator Ryan, but I think it's Senator Paul. Um, we had one of his aides actually come and tour the high school a couple of Fridays ago, and that was the big thing, is they're pushing for C T E programs and so. They came out and, um, visited with us and they visited with Almagordo too. Um, sophomores took their piece out today and then any student sophomore through senior can take their ass back next Wednesday on our campus. We have parent teacher conferences on Friday. Um, but one thing that we changed this year is that all of our advisory teachers reach out to parents on a positive note once a month, so. Um, just to open up that communication constantly with our parents. Um, Trio will be taking students to UTEP with the upward bound program on October twenty fifth, and we're hoping to have about thirty students going to that. Our Fall Festival for the entire district will be on the high school campus on October twenty third. Um, Senora was awarded the Hispanic Cultural Grant, Grant again this year, um, she was aw- awarded eight thousand dollars for, um, this entire school year. Um, her classes will also be performing at the middle school tomorrow. Um, but with that eight thousand dollar grant, that's how like the, um, outfit themselves, they buy, um. Music equipment and then they get to travel to different things. Um, our Native American club is working on their pageant for, um, next month. Um, I believe Ms. Kelly King Morgan said, um, she's shooting for November twelfth and thirteenth, and then they're also working on rock your mocks. And, um, we got our first walkthroughs, um, they have been completely done and we're starting first formal observations and. I can honestly say like Chance and I are super pleased with what we're seeing, like every time we do a walkthrough. Um, he did Francis's formal today and, or yesterday and he came back and he was like, oh my gosh, you should have seen this lesson and. It's just so neat to like be able to see what teachers are doing in their classrooms with this block schedule in ninety minutes, so. You guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam President, uh, members of the board. Um, business item three point one, I'm recommending approval of the consideration of the agenda. Oh. One second.
There's been a motion in a second that we approve the agenda, all is in favor, say aye, those opposed, no. Consideration of minutes for the meeting support twenty twenty five.
It's a Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of the minutes for the September tenth, twenty twenty five, regular school board meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the minutes from a previous meeting, all of them, they would say aye, those opposed, no. Um, next is. Consideration of the check register.
It's a Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of the check register for September twenty twenty five, and we'll do that, Mister Regular President, if there was any question.
Yeah, we need a motion, I'll second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the check register for September twenty twenty five, all is in favor, say aye, those opposed, no. Um, consideration of the graduation date changed to Wednesday, May twentieth.
It's a Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval or change of graduation date. Wednesday, May twenty, twenty twenty five, and we do have Ms. Hill there.
Is this twenty six?
Oh, you sure is, thank you.
You said change, so. What do we change to?
Graduating.
Twenty twenty six, sorry.
And we do have Ms. Hill here, if we have any questions, I know we've discussed it.
Those are, you put out something to kind of.
We did a survey of all of our, um, seniors and their parents on that one and the staff.
Just, just for my own. Uh, what's the percentage of feedback that you got?
So it was overwhelming for Wednesday on that one. And so we also, when we did the survey, we put in there like why we were considering changing it, so like. On Friday night, we put, this is Almagordo's graduation, um, Thursday night, we put, this is Muscular's graduation, and so like. It wasn't just listing dates, it was, I mean, we had multiple dates on it.
Right.
Um, ranging from. Wednesday all the way to Saturday on there, like we even gave like morning options on it. And then we, um, sent it out to our senior, um. Parents in a robocall on that one, and then we had all of our seniors take it during advisory class. And so at the, the last time I had checked, when I sent this over, it was like we had like a hundred and twenty responses. And I wanna say like seventy percent was for Wednesday night.
We're still looking at the evening?
Seven. And on Thursday, we even gave it, uh, like an earlier option, like we did an earlier option. From Muscularos and then we did also like an eight o'clock option too, so like they even had like an option on that one.
That's a good. Students and the families. They're brought for it, I'm buying even, thank you.
And I would like to, like, consider doing that for like the juniors, again, like. I would like a, a date to kinda stick, so then we know like every year it's on Wednesday, but. I mean, it, for at least the first few years, like I think it should be up to.
And a good heads up this far ahead allows for a lot of planning and whatnot, so.
Yeah, and Herb Jones is coming next week, so when they start. Ordering their senior stuff, then we'll have a graduation date.
I'll second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the graduation date changed to Wednesday, May twenty, twenty twenty six, all those in favor say aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thirty five, consideration of the cell, the old activity bus.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of the cell of the old activity bus.
Question?
Yes sir.
Uh, the ability to sell that back to.
We're talking to Hillary right now, there's a possibility that they could use it for a year or so for a bus that breaks down that could turn into another district, but they didn't buy it. Okay, that's a possibility, other than that, we'll put it out to bed, dad from. Fixing the Mexico from Shakaral.
Yes sir.
He's usually the one that comes up and buys them, anybody can buy, we can put it out to bed, like. I know Jody's. Partner wants to build her a nice motorhome. I'd say that's a great idea.
He's like adamant to.
I don't know, we'll use it right now, but Hillary's our best bet, we'll get the most money if Hillary will come through, but other than that, we'll just put it out for beer then.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the cell, the old activity bus, all those in favor say aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Um, day six, consideration of an amendment of pause, the, um, number J. Three ones are their own weapons in school.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of amendment of policy J thirty one hundred weapons in school. And I didn't outline it, but it's, uh, due to the, uh. Liquid, there's a pepper spray, we need to add that into our, our handbook, so kids can't be bringing that in the other spray.
I believe it's that's the fence.
Yeah, that's right, here, I'm just getting, I'm a reader.
Chemical defense camera is.
This may also include chemical weapons.
In a way, we. We, they've had a student, I understand that, uh, would bring one to the office and leave it with Jody and them in the office, because. When she walked home, there was dogs. So we would never pick on somebody for if they bring it to the office and fix it at back of the school, but if it's used to. Use on somebody else, we.
Better to take.
We will have to go with the policy. Does that make sense?
Now. I was looking in here. Uh.
The, the, all weapons, this, the.
Even others said.
Yeah, I know some of the, I know like teasers, it's. Now, it's, uh, cartridge. It shoots, so it's considered, well. Yeah, they look and pay.
Yeah.
Well, it's not like I was before. Uh, but I know that.
We definitely do not want. It's cancer to each other, I do wanna watch it, but.
I mostly I'm just gonna be back, how upon.
Yeah. Yeah. They can just bring a big place, I mean, find somewhere.
Demonstration in our game. Should we get a ride?
I have a video right now.
Oh, that's that.
We said the stream was not.
I will second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the amendment of policy number J thirty one hundred, all of them, they would say aye, those opposed, no.
Uh, alright, aye.
Motion carries. Three seven, discussion and consideration of J three builders quote for the high school. So.
Madam President, members of the board. Uh. I, I, I don't wanna say I'm recommending approval of the J three builders, but I'm not against it, I think it should be a board decision, I have talked with Mister Regular about it. I think it's a lot of money right now, but we do need to get the, the roof fixed on the. Yes sir. On the deal, it's seventy five thousand, five ninety two. I think we could use some carryover money for it, but I, I really believe it needs to be decided on the board and I'm good either way. And we've looked at it several different ways, the different building materials. And I think the best way is J three is correct by replacing the whole roof of the metal roof, right? It's, I, I think it's time that I think we need to come back on the phase two and paint and. Andy needs a door done too, so we can get the roll up door, we can use our wimps in our shop and. That was all part of the original one, so.
So at the, at this point. The, the quote that we got from J three, that is. Are we gonna look at just?
This would be like the phase one.
Right, just the roof?
Right, yeah, it's in here.
Oh shit, cuz I looked at it and it didn't, it didn't say, you know, the downstairs is broken and that, right?
The top there fit to be fixed, prepped and painted, the wall, so it is getting painted off metal door exteriors.
Okay.
Replace one damaged cap down drain, the entire metal structure be prepped and painted. All trims caps, feathers, downspouts prepped, painted. So it's a lot and Mister Regular?
Yeah.
What would your recommendation be that we do need to paint down our buildings, but?
No, I mean, budget wise, it's fine, but being over sixty thousand, we actually have to go out. Did, yeah. We can't just have them do it.
Well, that's actually.
Yeah, we can't do a C E S, that's right.
Yeah, they were C E S, that'd be different, yes.
We would have to open it up and go to bed and we could use White Sands National or J three and.
It'll just probably, I mean, it'll just kick it back another month. Cause I have a feeling I already know how that's gonna go.
So we need to change this to motion. Or we just deny that you can dispel this and, uh.
Yeah.
Well, nobody will die for like a second and then we can go back and open up for beers and at the next maybe we can.
And re.
Put on there, so.
Okay, put on there. So then.
I just think, but I tried, I didn't think about that for her. Thank, that's like when you're here though.
Anything over sixty?
Yes.
So do you wanna disable it or you wanna let it die?
We'll have to change it again later, so let's, yeah.
And I will say, these guys are doing a great job and I'll bring that up.
Also like the fact that they, uh. Putting the.
Can you hear it too?
They do.
Right. But I like the local. Motion dies. Yeah.
Motion dies. Um, so three point eight, um, consideration of Tularosa's twenty twenty five special education handbook of procedures.
Yes, madam president, members of board, recommend approval to rope Tulare's twenty twenty five special education handbook of procedures. I will do have Ms. Maruho here. If you have any questions on.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to kind of summarize some of that?
Yeah, really, one of the biggest changes in the new manual and it has been badly is the, um, approval of our I D E A grant. And that is just, we do it annually. We, it's a big application that we have to fill in. Um, and it covers like the salaries of various teachers and funds different position used in special education. And so that was, um, completed with, uh, assistance from Tom and submitted and it was approved. And so that's just going to be added to the current, but there were no significant changes, yeah, aside from that. Cause yeah, it's, it's a lot.
Like this, there's a lot.
But I mean, it's.
All right.
It's a very, very wide range.
All right.
On motion. I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the Tulare's twenty twenty five special education handbook of procedures. All those in favor say aye, those opposed no.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, okay, for discussion, so four, one, um, bars, border part and cafeteria updates, Mr. Brecker.
Yeah, so we've had quite a few bars, but all these were just maintenance bars, cleaning up some budget lines that were a little negative here, moving it around. I'll, I'll just kind of clean up. And Arisa did most of those for me. She was a big help on those. Um, I want to add that, uh, the P E D student nutrition bureau will be here October fifteenth. We're getting an administrative review. Uh, you get one every cup, two, three years, and I guess it's just our turn. So they'll be here checking how, how we're doing things and things like that. It's kind of like almost like a audit of our student nutrition program type thing. But they'll be checking, you know, the food and how, everything that Jesse does, plus they'll be looking, you know, what are expenses and revenues and everything like that. Um, I don't really have anything to bring up on the board report unless there are any questions on the budgets. And then I just want to add the week of October twentieth, I will get the pleasure to attend a conference in Fort Worth for the ASBO International. It's the Association of School Business Officials. Um, and New Mexico ASBO is picking up the tab for me to go. So it's, it's a great opportunity to meet school business officials from all around the U S. So I'll be going that way.
This is part of your major role, or?
Yeah, well, I was gonna say.
With record, Robert, uh, this is our, served here in our contract with, uh, the, his dad, this Elliot.
Yes, we can renew one more time for next year, then we have to go out for a bit.
No, thank you.
All right, um, four to discussion of the fall festival.
We're gonna go to Miss Hill for that or?
Yeah.
Lots of the, we want to stop by fall festival.
I can, yeah. We have, uh, I don't know, uh, it's like almost forty booths between the four schools and a food truck coming um, on the evening of the twenty third from six to eight. We are doing one dollar tickets for all of our booths will be ticket wise. Um, yeah, all the schools have a lot of participation going. Um.
It'll be the haunted house, the same, same thing pretty much.
Yeah. It'll be a good time. It's true. You gotta go in the haunted house.
Yeah, that's exactly why I'm going.
It's gonna be good.
I never been.
It looks something like my son's room.
Miles gave us all the inspiration.
I got an idea.
Makes my dad scream every time.
Right, well, four, three, discussion of travel education status report.
Um, I'm actually asking if they can favor it or wait, um, the status report is prepared, however, the, um, information is still embargoed by the state department. So it's just kind of, we can't present it in a for public forum like this, but we do have it prepared. I don't know if you want to email it beforehand or just wait till the next.
Okay. Um, okay, so four, four is discussion on construction of swimming.
I had a wild air, but we knew it was wonderful. I think everybody agrees with me. What I've done is I'm trying to get all the city, see if they'll partner with us somehow, some way. We can't really go to capital outlay funds for it because we have a big project underway. And after that project, we have another plan with a, with a roof at elementary school and a brand new three K. But if the city would, uh, partner with us somehow, I think we could break this. And I actually sent letters to all of our representatives and our senators. Uh, and see if we can get some kind of momentum, if we can get the people in town behind us. We, uh, well, I thought we could just get one of the fiberglass underground pools, but apparently you can't do that for commercial, only for houses. But with the construction down on the old auditorium, where we fixed up the two locker rooms. Uh, you guys need to go in there and see it is, it is amazing what that, um, J three builders. Literally you can walk out some doors, you still have the boy side, the girl side, the place turning the baskets. All we're literally missing is a swimming pool and a fence.
And that was gonna be my question is just not completely like it used to be, but it's not adjacent to an up and coming.
And my thought is I really don't want a swim team, but I would like to see a place that we could train.
Use for P E.
Life guards, that stuff. Life guards are really hard to get right now. Maybe we look at it that angle that we could do it in some kind of a C T D deal. Anyway, I'm, I'm checking some angles out, so there's nothing done, but, uh, we literally have everything but a pool and a fence.
Yeah.
I mean, so if I'm here, if everybody wants to pitch everything by like two above ground poles with summer for the.
That's more my speed.
Maybe a couple of ladders jump off the roof and.
Four, five, or, like, four, five, update on the construction of the new middle school, I guess.
We went over that.
Um, four, six, discussion of naming the new middle school gym.
Well, they just, uh, Mr. Albert.
Yes, um.
Something the board has been thought about.
Oh, you should have.
Oh, shucks. Um, when the building of the of the new junior high had come up originally, this has been two, three years ago. A couple of people have brought up the idea, which I highly agree with, of naming the new middle school's gymnasium after Max Salcedo. Um, a lot of people here probably aren't old enough to know who Max was, but Max was one of the he was a principal at the time that he really knew how to move students. He had a way of just bringing you in and making you feel like he was talking exactly to you. And the reason I wanted to really do the middle, the middle, middle school gym was because that's where he really did his best work. He would take you into the gym and he would do this repeatedly throughout the year. He would say, this is where you are in your school year, and this is where you have to go. And then he would come back later and this is where we are now, but this is where you are in your life. And he was someone who never quit on a student. I, at the time, was not the best student in the world. I didn't have the maybe the, the best people that I should have probably been hanging out with, but it didn't matter. He was one of those people who just, he gave a damn. And people like that are rare. And the fact that he was just somebody who in the community, he was a coach, he was a principal, he was an announcer forever. This is a lot of the reasons why I wanted to really bring his name to the forefront if we were to name the gymnasium after someone.
Um, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it in the next meeting so we can do the change order. So they'll have the
Yes, sir.
The graphics up on the wall, so.
Right.
It's a total important decision, so if you want, we can add it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, should we open up for other nominations and then discuss other? I've heard a lot of great things about this, you know, like so people that and.
And we do both.
Do what?
We do like a two, maybe the, the gym, the school itself after Salcedo and maybe the gym after Coach Lawrence, if it's a possibility.
Yeah. I never thought of that either. The only reason I didn't bring up the entire school is because we've never had a school named after someone yet. I know we've had gyms done that way and stadiums, but I didn't want to overstep my bounds, as it were, so.
I can tell you this in Arizona, they named every building and people made fun of this all the time. This Manier Hall and, uh, it was just.
Yeah.
But at the same time, it's something that happens too. So that's totally up to you guys. I mean, and the community, you guys represent the community, so.
Then let's, if we can, let's go ahead and for the next meeting. Discussion and, uh, is for all.
I would like to say something. Can I say something?
Sure. Of course.
Like, we're at the high school and our gym is named after Michael Dormy. And like, I understand Michael Dormy, but like, kids nowadays, they, they don't understand that. And so that's where like, it gets into kind of a slippery slope when you start naming stuff after people like, don't get me wrong, Max Salcedo was a great principal and Nicky Lawrence was a great basketball coach. But like, as we get going, like, it, it, it gets, it gets hard on them.
Is there, is there a way we can do like a picture with a tribute explaining who they are?
That would probably be a good idea.
Just so.
Understand.
When students.
This is a good one, or it's not. Or in New Mexico State. She's like, who's Joe skiing? She had no idea. And we look it up. She's like, tell me, no, look it up. Read what these people did, what they were about. And maybe that is a good way to go about doing that. There's people that have touched the lives of people for, for many, many years. I mean, there's four years, six years and you're out of school. That's, that'll, it'll happen continuously. You know, I mean, we, I guess you could say the same about Bob Searney Stan, yet he was a coach here for almost thirty years. You know, so I, me personally, the way I would see it is I think that is a great idea to just pay tribute to somebody other than just throwing their name up. What were they about? And what, what did they really bring to the front of, of education and, and sports?
Yeah, why were they, why were they picked to put their name?
Right.
You could split the gym there too. It could be both things on the.
Yeah.
You could do a variety of. It's good to get my thanks.
Yes, sir. All right. So, I do that.
All right, um, four, seven, on the discussion of creating an advisory committee. Which is kind of, yeah, that would be kind of like me, um. So I kind of had the idea of possibly, um, doing like a committee of a couple of board members, some administrators from each school. Maybe possibly students, teachers, where we could like meet once a month or like just to get like input from them, like feedback, like ideas, stuff about their schools, like they want to talk to us about that we could bring to the board and I don't know, just like open up, yeah, open up, like, yeah, communication, I guess, so. I just feel like we need to be closer to the staff and.
One meeting a month generally does not.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Coffee with the board or something.
Yeah.
Beer with the board.
Got a ring to it.
What's that, bro?
It's a good idea. I think it's, I don't know how you work that, probably if you're administrators with your principals and, uh, and that way you could rotate teachers, because you don't want.
Yeah.
Somebody just sitting there that's mad at me all the time. Somebody be mad at Hillary.
Spread the wealth.
But that way you can rotate the staff easier that way and.
What's on their minds?
Yeah.
Open forum.
And it's, I think it's a great idea because you don't see everything or hear everything and.
That's always, that's always my problem, right? There's a lot of moving parts within it soon.
So, I'm just a little time to show up for admin meeting and, uh, I think that was one of the things that happened for our admin meeting, but you have to see.
Get a real insight of what's.
Yeah.
What's really going on.
See like their, their needs.
Yeah.
Like stuff about their building, also anything like really.
Let me know the game before I'm buying them also.
This can get sick to have students involved.
Yeah, yeah, that's another.
Start of the year.
And we could do this where the principal or the teachers are able to pick certain students of who they feel that should be sitting in on the bedrooms and kind of. I would say.
I think that would be more of a lottery too, like you don't just bring your pets.
Well, absolutely, absolutely.
They have to draw something or draw a number or picture in board, then they draw them. I don't want to see a bunch of teacher pets.
In the same.
And I love teacher's pets because they're my best kids, but
The same.
At the same time, I like all the kids have that voice.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I agree.
Remember that we can only have two board members.
Yeah.
Right, that's what she said too.
We could, we could also rotate also.
And you can rotate board members. Two and down the two, yeah. That way you guys aren't stuck every uh, somebody's at work.
Right.
Which, I mean, if, even if I'm at work and I'm not busy, I can still.
David can, because he's like down the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
How we like.
I guess.
Not right now, not right now. I don't know, he's not going to Honda or.
Some good chicken.
Um, setting on the next regular session or the twelfth, twenty twenty five.
Would you guys like to do it somewhere else or do you want to stay here? You want to start going to some of the school building for Encino? Where do you want to go?
Where do you want to start?
High school.
High school.
High school? Yes, I think on the twelfth that you know of.
Um, I'm pretty sure we're doing our pageant pet night.
Oh.
So we do that, then we're gonna have to.
Maybe we had to move our board meeting because you guys may not know that pageant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, skate volleyball is starting that week, so.
You know, we, we move it a week up soon.
We'll go the eleventh on Monday, you'll probably be safe with volleyball.
And staying.
Right. Not Monday. Oh, it'd be Monday to ten.
You play the week before on the.
That's better.
Bodied days and have runs.
Yeah. Second to twelve. That should be the first Tuesday of the month, right?
That's the fourth.
That's the fourth.
You guys are my boss. You tell me when I'm going.
Yeah, or can we, because I'm still hungry, so I don't go until.
Um, I can't think of my schedule. I think I'm have something according that day.
You wanna schedule it for that day? And then if we have to change it, just email me or call me and we can fix that.
As, as of right now? You can do it.
All right, um, so, uh, who goes the agenda? Most of you go during.
I'll second.
First, we want to make second to during the meeting, all the baby.